Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of November twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. If anyone in attending this meeting needs amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. A few housekeeping issues and we'll get to main event that you're all here for. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Donna, can you give a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Still here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager.
Nothing, Donna.
Does council have any board reports to share? Right? Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
I moved to the second. I second it.
All right. We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda is published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have several presentations this evening. Our first swearing in of our police chief and our police captain. Sorry, Chief. All right, let's see after me. Everybody, my camera's going. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Chris Kobsen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And I will abide by the Code of Ethics of the City of Shelton Police Department.
And I will abide by the Code of Ethics of the Shelton Police Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police chief for the City of Shelton.
Discharge the duties as a police chief for the City of Shelton.
We also have a new captain. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Daniel Hatt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And I will abide by the Code of Ethics of the Shelton Police Department.
And I will abide by the Code of Ethics of the Shelton Police Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police captain for the City of Shelton.
Discharge the duties of the position of police captain for the City of Shelton.
Perfect, all right. City manager, want to make a few comments?
You know, it's just a, it's an exciting night for our city. Chief and captain, as they've spent a number of years here at the City Shelton Police Department, I can't wait to witness the, the great things they're going to bring to our community and work side by side with these individuals. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Council?
Yes.
Council, have any comments or questions?
Work on that.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you for keeping us safe and for all your hard work and all the excellent things you're doing in the community. Thanks.
I do have to say, this room feels extremely safe tonight.
Yeah.
Do we need another photo op at all, or does anybody want photos? Individuals or? You guys are forever linked. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. We appreciate you.
Exactly right. You guys are not staying now. Yeah, well. Yeah.
You want to run now?
The, uh. That's fine, we can do all these. Certificates.
They're open there for them to find.
Sign by.
I told them.
Yeah, we'll catch them later.
You know where to find them.
Yeah.
You got lonely? Can I get pulled in here now?
Yeah, it's like it's super safe together. Thanks, guys. We still got fire chief.
Oh, so if it's supposed to burn. All right.
All right, ready, Mr. Mayor. So now we have a presentation from the Laura Watson Sears. From Schoolhouse Rocks.
I'm Laura and I help run PNW race events. Throughout the year, we put on about five different fundraisers that we do for local charities. The last one was Schoolhouse Rocks. It was in September and that money we donated to the Shelton School District. The total cost of the event was around nine thousand. And we were awarded thirty-five hundred. That money that we used for radio, like KO, KJR and KMAS. Grant, we use Journal and we also hung fl- flyers around Mason County, Thurston County and Gray's Harbor County. And a portion was used towards social media. And spreading the word that way. The total attendance was a little bit more than what we expected with a good portion of the attendees that came from either out of town or out of state. We were able to determine that from online ticket sales. By doing an informal survey, we estimated that there was at least ten people that paid for local lodging. These events play a pivotal role in supporting noble, noble causes. They don't only raise funds, but it also cultivates a sense of shared purpose and encouraging community, community members to contribute and towards a positive change. I just want to thank you for your time and let you know that it was a successful event.
Comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Now we have a presentation from Christmas Town Marketing and Events from Rachel Hansen.
I got some, I got some stuff for you guys if you want to read it later. I'm right here next to her.
Thank you.
Love stuff. So I understand I'm presenting, presenting on two different items. The first one, I believe, is the murals, right? No, I start with Christmas Town first? Okay. So Christmas Town, twenty twenty-two, we had over fifteen thousand people paying. We had, we can figure that out because we have lots of reservations online with the wagon rides. The event has been going since two thousand and nineteen when we started with the Guinness World Record Maze, where we were successfully did it and during the Christmas Town Parade. And since then, we did in two thousand and twenty-two, we did it down at Mel's Lot and then in two thousand and twenty-one, we were, had the Christmas Maze as well as the market over here at the Civic Center. Every year, the website, the traction and the number of guests has increased. And we have managed to make Shelton one of the top ten Christmas destinations in Washington, which is exciting. And this year, I actually got a phone call from Fodder, Fodder, Fodder Magazine. So they're doing a story on Christmas destinations across the United States, which I hope we get included in. They were very excited about the story. It's, it's kind of a nice story when you think of the heritage that we have from so long ago and then bringing back Santa Claus that had been up since nineteen sixty-four. So there's that connection between generations. And then there's also the connection with our timber heritage, which really ties into well with tourism. In two thousand and twenty-two, we saw about a twenty percent increase in lodging tax revenues during what I consider the revenue period that would reflect our winter sales. So going into late December, January, February. And then comparing that to the twenty twenty-one numbers, we were up about twenty percent. And our website went up about fifty percent, which was kind of exciting. We had over thirty-five thousand people just come in that three month period to visit the website. And then we can look at, we did a lot of QR codes, which is my big, my big key thing right now because I can really kind of pinpoint where people are going. And we pretty much represented. It was just amazing. We had people from New York, Pennsylvania. And a lot of people were traveling to Seattle and made a day trip out here. And because we had so many evening events and it just looked prettier at night. We had a lot of people that stayed in the area. So I would consider it a success. And we're looking forward to a very successful Christmas Town in two thousand and twenty-three. We have incredible support. And last year, the city awarded us twelve thousand. We spent roughly thirty-six thousand dollars on Christmas Town because we do everything for free at the event. And then we have entertainment and we make sure we pay our entertainers and pay for everything. But we also got a lot of community support, which made up the difference. And then we were also charging for things like the wagon rides. We did do a lot of free stuff, but there were like free workshops and things and we put that back into the event itself. So thank you very much for the city's support and we look forward to a wonderful Christmas Town this year. And thank you for your support again. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Now you are on to Overlook Park.
Okay. So this one's kind of a hard one too. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. There's a couple of murals up on the hill and Overlook, Overlook Park. It started off with Santa Claus again in two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and nineteen, the city awarded us a place, a permanent location for Santa Claus. And then after that, it progressed where someone said we'd like to see Paul Bunyan. So it's all been done with donated labor, donated funds, donated wood. And with the support of the city to basically all that the grant goes towards is putting up the lifts up and down. So everybody is volunteer that comes and puts those up. We now have four rotating murals. It's kind of hard to talk about how many heads and beds they put because that's very difficult. But I did pull up the WAST dot numbers for two thousand and twenty-two and we had about fifteen thousand cars and all of them stopped because of Santa Claus and all that else. It is, I think, good for the community because we also get a lot of anticipation when we see these murals go up. People kind of wonder about when the events are coming. And I do know that people care because they really get upset when I don't take them down. And Santa Claus just went up last week. Thanks to John and the Quanis volunteers and my son Zach. And he'll be going down in January and then Paul will go up. So any questions about those at all?
Thank you for all your hard work with all that stuff.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
For last presentation, it's not as fun. Finance Director Mike.
With that kind of a deal. Are you just tired of budget?
It's about over.
I'm not tired. Okay. So the September monthly financial report, I think, just to spend a little bit of time, but you're hearing a lot of budget information. I know we continue to have more information to base our estimates on. So I think what we're able to show you gets more accurate. We're able to see a little bit better where we're at. We're budgeting with an eye towards sustaining the city into the future. And I think that's the message we want to keep relaying to council staff, the public, that we're really not looking at just this fiscal year or next, but beyond that. So that we're not in a position where we found ourselves earlier this year. You'll notice, I don't, I didn't ask for the report to be brought up because you have it in, it's in the packet, it's available online. We're estimating some ending fund balance. As you know, there are many deferred maintenance projects and purchases that the city has. So we can come back to council in the future for some of those expenditures, but we're budgeted with our reserve in mind. None of us knows what the future of the economy holds. So I think we're well planned and well budgeted in that regard. The revenue for the general fund, and you'll find it on page two, is coming in positively, other than some of the known places where we had estimated that we would not fully collect on, BNO tax being one of them. Of course, I'm sitting here with you in November and so we, I have even more knowledge. Property taxes came in as budgeted. You can see on there, we're estimating sales tax to be a little bit above budget. And I think a lot of that's largely due partly to prices being a bit more. So the tax you're paying on things is more, but also the events we have in town undoubtedly bring more people in, which is good for the overall economy of the city. On the top of page seven, we're estimating to end the fiscal year in a good position across all of the funds. I spend a little bit of time each month on the FTE. And so at the bottom of page seven, we have six vacancies. Again, this is at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, up at the end of September of two thousand and twenty-three. We have six vacancies in the general fund as of September thirtieth and ten vacancies overall across all city funds. This changes a bit. If you were to ask us where it is today, it's a little bit different. But we're trying to use this data not only to really gauge kind of where we're saving money, but as City Manager Zeigler and I were just talking yesterday, you know, some of the savings we're now seeing is because we reduce costs in this budget. It took some time to realize that, but we reduced positions. Some people were laid off, we're doing without some positions to try to make sure that we can sustain the budget going into the future. And in particular, I'm talking about the general fund. And so that's just kind of the highlight there. On page eleven. I wanted to bring this up simply because next month, we're going to be bringing you a supplemental budget to the two thousand and twenty-three budget to clean up some of the places we need to. And an example of this is here. The solid waste fund shows estimated revenue and expenditures that are higher than budget. You know about this, I know. It was for the C Street landfill cleanup. We had more revenue, which was good in the form of the Department of Ecology grant. And consequently, our expenses were more. So we need to clean that up. And so we'll talk more about that that month. Next month, but I bring that to your attention as you look at that budget for the overall funds. So I'll end there with kind of where we stand, but everything's looking positive. You can also see on that page eleven, we're estimating all of our funds to end in a positive, which is where we want to see it.
Any comments or questions? Ten vacancies. We're not actively recruiting for all those ten vacancies, correct?
Not for all of them. We are for a couple of them, but many of them are on hold.
Any other questions? Thank you for the hard work and City Manager for the hard work and getting this back in in the even or the black, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other questions, we're going to move on to our business agenda. And City Manager has information for us about a public defense contract.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Tonight I'm bringing to you the first look at a new contract for indigent, indigent defense, sorry, in the municipal court. Sound Defenders has at least the principal of Sound Defenders, Mr. Tashner has been working for the city since two thousand and eight. They changed their name subsequently. So now it's Sound Defenders rather than Tashner Associates. So the city set a long working relationship with Mr. Tashner for indigent defense within municipal court. We have had a couple contract revisions over the last several years. And as we approached two thousand and twenty-four, we thought it best to essentially start over with a new contract and maybe capture all of those revisions that have been done over previous years, get them in one document. Part of those revisions are more accurately referencing the case count that Mr. Tashner would see through municipal court. That's estimated to be three hundred and sixty cases per year at a rate of three hundred and forty-eight dollars per case. Mr. Tashner always, as well, he provides in custody hearings on a monthly basis. So that's somebody that might be booked into, into jail for whatever reason. Appears within the courtroom or the video conference room at the jail and does the preliminary hearing for those individuals. And that rate is at twenty-five hundred dollars per month. So we have a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars budgeted for indigent events. I'm having trouble with indigent tonight. And we have some help through the OPD, the Office of Public Defense and their grant program that would offset these costs by thirty-nine thousand dollars each in two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five.
All right. Donna, has anyone sent up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like, no, I'd like to speak on this. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would place the contract for indigent defense services on the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Almost your questions from the council. Anticipated net cost increase.
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
That's it.
It's what I anticipated, another cost increase, yeah.
Right. Yeah, there comes your questions, Council. We have a motion to second to place the contract for indigent defense services on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize. Yeah, that's my fault.
You made me second guess myself. All right. We have another item for more. A resolution regarding two thousand and twenty-four legislative agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So tonight we have a resolution in front of you, one, three, zero, zero, one, one, two, three, that establishes the two thousand and twenty-four legislative agenda. As you know, we had a meeting with our thirty-fifth district delegation recently, had a nice tour with them around the community and talked about some of the opportunities and needs that we have here that are unique, unique to Shelton. Going into a short session with limited capital funds available, it was fairly clear that most of this legislative agenda will, will not be acted upon or be able to be acted upon by the, by our delegation. But it's important to recognize our needs and continue to communicate those with, with those important decision makers in Olympia. I will point out that there are a couple of projects such as the intersection improvements on Wallace Nealon Boulevard that have been an ask in the past. And so those capital asks are, are continuing. We won't see really much out of the, out of capital, especially transportation fund. We really want to focus on spending some of the funds that we've received over the past couple of years. We have the one point eight million dollars thing aside, boosters, pump station and those improvements. We have some ongoing needs, obviously. The homeless mitigation site, affordable housing initiatives that, that could be supported throughout our community and the state. The transportation benefit district that is sunsetting in two thousand and twenty-six. It's never too late to start discussing that with our state reps to see if there's some solutions there continuing that. Our, our infrastructure needs are great as we talked about through our water and sewer comprehensive plan. So we're continuing to have those discussions and certainly have more robust discussions as we go into the two thousand and twenty-five session. We would also, what we will be applying for, as the state reps said, you know, in the hundred thousand dollar range are probably most likely or more likely to be funded. Potentially some funding for the multimodal path, the Old Simpson Railway and, and the initial design on that with some funds dedicated at the parks budget. We could get that to at least we, we'd probably get that pretty close to full design and then seek additional grant funds through the RCO or other avenues to maybe maybe get that infrastructure in place in the future. So kind of a kickstart, if you will, and and supplement the, the local funding that we have through the Metromount Park District. So if you have any additions, comments on these, happy to take these. At this point, we are intent on getting this to our delegation in December, well before their, their session starts in January. They continuously tell us that that's really a benefit that if they have it early, they're able to react early and are able to implement rather than receiving it in January after the session starts. And by then it's essentially too late.
Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? Right. And do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would report resolution number one, three, zero, zero, dash, one, one, two, three to the action agenda on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, council meeting, further consideration.
Second. Comments or questions from the council? No. All right. We have a motion to second to forward resolution number one, three, zero, zero, dash, one, one, two, three to the action agenda of December fifth, for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we now have action agenda. Finance Mike, Director Mike Giddens has information for us about updating the fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council members. We're bringing you back the master fee schedule. As a reminder, this sets the fees and rates for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. We built the budget in anticipation of this. Upon your passage of this tonight, should you do so, these rates and fees will go into effect January first. There have been no changes to the resolution since I presented it at your last meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? All right, maybe have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, updating and establishing the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion? We've adopted resolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three, to present.
Second.
All right, comments or questions from the council? Right. We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one, two, nine, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have another item from Mike, an ordinance relating to BNO taxes.
Thank you. This is the ordinance updating our business and occupation tax. There are no changes since the last presentation, but just to review, this brings the ordinance into line with the current language. It does increase the BNO tax rate. But other than that, there are no changes since I presented it at your last meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone sent up for public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Audience like to speak. All right. They have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter three point five two of the Shelton Municipal Code related to business and occupation tax.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion? The ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three is presented. Second. Comments or questions from the council? All right. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, six, dash, one, zero, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we are recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Now Mike has an ordinance regarding the two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Thank you. Again, this represents a lot of work. I know I mentioned it last month in its presentation. I just want to take a moment to thank the department heads, but also a couple of members of the finance staff. Deputy Finance Director Terry Schnitzer, also grants and budget coordinator, Don Quismy, he's here in the audience. This is not done just by me. It could not happen without a lot of work from city staff and I want to thank them. This is just a, a real accomplishment and a big plan for two thousand and twenty-four. I find it really exciting when you look at this document and see all of the projects and efforts that are going to happen in two thousand and twenty-four. I think we're entering this fiscal year with a good plan. Again, I want to emphasize that we are basing ongoing expenses and costs on ongoing revenue. And that's such a good plan for our citizens, staff and the city as a whole. So that's putting us in a good position in the general fund. As you know, and have heard in presentations, what this budget does for the water and sewer fund brings those proprietary funds up to a level of really increasing some capacity and being able to do some things for the city that is needed. We're catching up on some really needed maintenance. We have some one-time expenditures that we're very clear about where we're dedicating that one-time money for in the budget. There's, just to highlight some of the other things that are in this, there's some modest money set aside for some homelessness response and some. advocacy in that area. I I do need to point out one change, and that is somewhat related, as I mentioned, when we were talking about the Shelton Metropolitan Park District budget. The twenty twenty four budget in this form has a decrease because in the capital improvement fund budget, we're able to decrease that expense for the two pickups in twenty twenty four. So we've paid for it out of the budget this year, and then SMPD, as I mentioned, will pay the city, if you will, back for that in its first quarter expenses. So we wanted to go ahead and make that correction as we brought it to you since that happened in between the first and second hearing. Other than that, I'll let city manager make any comments he wants, but there are no substantive changes other than that to the budget since its first presentation to you.
I want to reiterate Mike's thanks from our staff and Mike himself. I think that we we've built a built a team here that is taking our particular general fund, but all of our all of our funds quite seriously realized quickly in April of twenty twenty three of this year that we kind of had to take a closer look and get out the microscope and and make some changes here. It was embraced throughout our departments. It wasn't appreciated. It wasn't liked. But but is embraced because it's what we need to do for our community, and we're going to continue to do that. This is a living document. This is a document that that changes on a regular basis. You'll see a supplemental budget coming forward again in December that trues up some of the capital funds, particularly when some of these projects change, right? Whether we receive a grant that we would didn't anticipate in the in the original adoption of the budget or the project, the cost of our project change, or whatever that might be. This is a living document. We continually monitor and maintain, and we want to make sure the budget authority comes from the council. And we communicate with the council if we're transparent at all times. So you probably will be seeing a supplemental more than once a year, but also continuing to continuing to communicate with our monthly budget reports to hopefully ensure in the council that we are acting in the best interests of the community and being as physically responsible as we can. So if there's any additional information leading up to the approval of the budget or on a monthly basis that we can provide you, we want to make sure that we're able to do that.
Right. Donna, has anyone sent up for public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to talk on our budget?
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff as well for doing more with less and for being brave at this time. I was looking forward. So thanks so much.
We have a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year twenty twenty four.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented.
Second. Comments or questions from the council? Also, thank you and thank staff for everything that they've done for the budget. I know that was it was tough coming out of last year and balancing twenty twenty three and then moving right on to twenty twenty four and and keep that going until what, twenty thirty is what we what we look at, right? Till twenty thirty. I know I know that's an ongoing pain in the neck for you guys, but thank you. Alright, any other comments or questions?
Comment, again, echoing thanks for everything. And just, you know, I firmly believe a budget is also a communications tool. And communicates where we're at in the city, what our priorities are. And again, our our budget is reflecting what the community wants, which is we did some belt typing. We live within our means. Do the best we can to manage our resources with resources we have available. That's the direction you guys have always received from from the council, and that's what you execute year over year. We appreciate that, although we had to make some revenue adjustments this evening. It's not a fun moment, but hopefully that's communicating to the public that you can't have everything you want at the same price all the time. And we need to make make these changes from time to time, but in a responsible way, and I appreciate your your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else? Alright. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, three, dash, zero, nine, two, three as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carry. This public hearing is closed. And our last item from Mike is ordinance regarding ad DeLorean taxes.
Yes, as I mentioned in the Park District Board Meeting, we received certified assessed values from the county assessor, so we're presenting this ordinance to you for consideration tonight to set the regular city property tax levy and EMS emergency medical services levy that we're fortunate that our voters approved for our city, and that's what this is bringing forth to you. I'm it's the one percent increase, and I'm just going to give you, as I did with the SMPD ordinance, what that represents. So for the city property tax levy, that one percent increase is twenty two thousand two hundred and seventy nine dollars and ninety seven cents. And again, that increase is spread across all property owners in the city on commercial and residential. The EMS levy represents an eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollar and fifty nine cent increase against spread across all property owners, and that money goes directly to Central Mason Fire for to provide that in emergency medical services in the city of Shelton. So just to point that out that sometimes that one percent can be a little bit elusive, but to put the dollars and cents with it, that's what it represents.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone sent up a public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Right. Maybe a reading of ordinance number two, zero, one, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three.
Ordinance number two, zero, one, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad Valarm taxes in the City of Shelton for calendar year twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three, setting the twenty twenty four ad Valory of taxes as presented.
Second. Alright, comments or questions from the council? Alright, we have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, one, four, dash, zero, nine, two, three, setting the twenty twenty four ad Valory of taxes as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carry. This public hearing is presented. Project Manager Aaron Nix has information for us about a contract award for well one pipeline.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Thank you. Thank you for having me up here again. This is kind of old hat for you guys. You kind of you know about this project. We want to get out and start spending some of that grant money. So this is again about a two million, two, two point one million dollar project of which two million of it is funded by grants. Actually, it's one. I just want to myself pay compliment to both Brent and Jay. We have the these project meetings, and they're very intense in the sense that Jay's kind of basically said to us, you guys, let's get the best bang for our buck that we can get for our citizens. So these projects are continuously being honed to see what we can get more of and for the betterment of the community. As an example, on this particular project, as I mentioned to you, we talked a little bit about that casing and pushing that other pipe. Jay saw right at the get-go, look, we got to fill in that voided space. If we don't, we run the risk settlement. We're always thinking like that on ways in which we can get the most bang for our buck. It added a little bit of cost, but the product is going to be far superior. So I just want to pay a compliment to them. Brent, he is our guy on on the budget because he's just knocked it out of the park as far as running around and then trying to make it bounce. So he really deserves a lot of credit. Jay, you would agree? In any event, council, as I mentioned previous times, we did have the bid opening for this project. The engineer's estimate came in about one point nine two three million dollars. We got four viable bids. Our low bid is Rog Roglands Incorporated for two point zero four zero million dollars, and our hope is that we can get this awarded tomorrow after you guys approve it and get to work. So unless you have any glaring questions, I'm going to be quiet because you probably are there to listen to me about this project. And there's more coming.
Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on this? Right. We have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, five, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, five, dash, one, zero, two, three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with Roglands Incorporated for completion of well number one pipeline pressurization project.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt resolution number one, two, nine, five, dash, one, zero, two, three, for the well number one pipeline pressurization project as presented.
Second. Alright, comments or questions from the council?
Yes. When do you anticipate it's a break ground? First quarter of twenty four?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, by the time I get pre-conscated and all that stuff, it's metals. Yes, I would suspect that first of the year.
Any comments or questions? Alright, we have a motion to second to adopt resolution one, two, nine, five, dash, one, zero, two, three for the well one pipeline pressurization project as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, by the way, thank you, Brent, just for all your hard work and and Jay and and Aaron and your staff. Next on the agenda is a contract amendment from SCADA Services, who are in storm watch superintendent Brett Armstrong has details.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I bring forward the SCADA Services contract amendment. Nothing has changed since the last reading. And there are no further questions?
Alright, Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on SCADA contract? We have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, eight, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, eight, dash, one, zero, two, three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, approving contract amendment number seven to the professional services contract for SCADA services with Parametrics Incorporated and granting signature authority for related documents.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number one, two, ninety, dash, one, zero, two, three for the SCADA contract amendment with Parametrics Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the council? We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one, two, nine, eight, dash, one, zero, two, three for the SCADA contract amendment for the parametrics as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post motion carries. Our next action item is the joint mitigation plan. Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill has the details.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be filling in for Mr. Hill tonight.
I just looked up NCJ.
Yeah, alright.
Take care of it. City Manager Mark Ziegler will have details.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So the City of Shelton is required by federal law to have a hazard mitigation plan. The city has recently partnered with Mason County and other jurisdictions to formulate that plan. This plan, when it's in effect, we would be eligible for preempt post-hazard funding, disaster funding when adopted. So there's been no change since the the briefing on, let's see, eleven, seven, looks like November seventh is when this was briefed.
Alright, Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Correct. We have a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, nine, dash, one, zero, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, nine, dash, one, zero, two, three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the twenty twenty three Mason County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve resolution number one, two, nine, nine, dash, one, zero, two, three, adopting the twenty twenty three Mason County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Plan.
Second.
I didn't. No, I didn't hear you. Comments or questions from the council? For a second. She asked, that's what I asked. No. Alright, we have a motion to second to approve resolution number one, two, nine, nine, dash, one, zero, two, three, adopting the twenty twenty three Mason County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Plan. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post motion carries. Our last item is the contract for a designated crisis responder. City Manager Mark Ziegler has information for us.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this contract or these contracts originally briefed on October seventeenth, we pulled it from the November seventh council action agenda because our attorney was still reviewing a couple of items within the contract. The contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization, there were no changes from that date. So as a reminder, since it's been a few weeks through the homeless task force meetings back in twenty twenty two, one of the recommendations was a designated crisis responder to help with mental health issues in our community. The city received a grant through the Association of Washington Cities late twenty two for the first half of twenty twenty three. We have a designated crisis responder embedded within our police department that serves our community. And that funding ran out at the end of June in twenty twenty three of this year. Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization notified us of funding that's available. So one of the contracts is with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health to provide the designated crisis responder within the city for the rest of this year. The other contract, Olympic Health and Recovery Services, that is for the crisis responder themselves. So this is essentially a pass-through. Funding comes from Thurston Mason Behavioral Health. Comes to the city, we pay Olympic Health and Recovery Services, dollar for dollar to continue providing those services through the end of this year. We have every intention and Thurston Mason Behavioral Health has notified us they have every intention to continue an agreement in twenty twenty four as well, and funding is available.
Thank you. Anyone sent up a public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak?
Thank you.
I'd be curious, maybe somebody could send me an email, maybe Mark you can. How many people have that, has that DSR touched? Where are where are we at with that? How much funding has been put out? What kind of positive reinforcement, what kind of positive feedback did we have from that? And is it a viable option? I'd really like to be able to see that and see what, you know, have we made a difference with that? You all know that we have a lot more people coming into town. So do we have one? Do we have two? And then that my second one on that is that I guess I'm just concerned about the length of time. We have a task force meeting in twenty two. Here we're almost twenty four. You know, I mean, how long does it take to get that action to happen? A lot of negative things happen between point A and point B. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have to speak? Alright. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve the contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization and Olympic Health Recovery Services for designated crisis responder and authorized city manager sign the contracts.
Second.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from the council?
I I kind of wanted to follow up on that, too. I was just wondering if we had metrics on that as well, just like what's happening.
You should get them in your Friday Friday updates. If you're not receiving those, feel free to reach out and I'll make sure that you have those again. Yeah.
Thank you.
I love that.
I appreciate reading those every every Friday. I have heard great.
I'm sorry, DCR, she is killing.
Yeah, I I've heard some great things from our from our law enforcement and from our our fire department that the DCRs, I don't know, remember back before we had our own, we shared with Thurston County. And we'd have somebody downtown by the clock tower in crisis. And by the time somebody would call a DCR, by the time they got here, that person's sitting down on the bench and the DCR would say, nah, you're fine. See you later. Back to Olympia. And that happened probably you know, a couple of times a week. And now we have DCR that's here in Shelton and able to respond quickly. And I've heard great things from law enforcement, again, also that, you know, they're the only ones that can actually take away somebody's right and put them in, you know, a mental facility.
Involuntary amendment, yeah. And the the DCR that's embedded in the police department also provides services of amazing health. Works with the sheriff's office as well, so we have a good relationship throughout the community, so to provide services. Not just within the city limits, but but outside other agencies as well, and the the reports I have our police department are outstanding. And they're really thankful they have that resource available to them because it's just it's just not a skill set, right, that they have available to them.
I wanted to add that our last leadership meeting with the county folks, especially with the county law enforcement folks, their number one
Their number one priority was to have a DCR. And we provided that. So I hope that we could get this new contract in twenty twenty four. But, that's all.
Catching uh, catching up in dispatch, hearing him on the radio, they're responding on the radio. Uh, a law enforcement frequency, uh, they're an unarmed unit, so you can, you can. Hear the volume of responses that they're going to and how often. Uh, law enforcement doesn't even need to go. In some certain, certain circumstances, they're able to keep it de-escalated and help people out. It's a tremendous program and I wish we had more funds to, to expand on it because it's uh, it is making an impact. I know our county partners agree with that. So. Is, is there something we can post on the city website that shows the contacts are made and, you know, without?
Yeah, I don't, there's, obviously there's no uh, sensitive data that, that's been um, just, it's distributed out. So. Yeah, we'll see how, how best to.
I'd say be able to include in the, the police annual report as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Great. Alright, any other comments or questions? Alright, we have a motion to second to approve the contract with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administration Services Organization, Olympic Health and Recovery Services. For a designated crisis responder and authorize the city manager to sign the contracts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alright, we are now at. City manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. The one thing we didn't get to recognize tonight with our, our new chief and captain is the accreditation process. I think you saw the press release. Um, yesterday, right? It's only Tuesday. Um. But i- it really is a, a department-wide effort that adds to um, the, the department's um, accountability. And, and best practices in our community and. And gives us opportunities for funding as well. Um, as I mentioned Friday, the chief has applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant. No match required for operational uh, for our police department, just by receiving that accreditation. Um, so we'll see opportunities there uh, as well as ensuring that our community and uh, is receiving. Uh, police services um, that are um, at the highest standard as developed through uh, Washington Association of. Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. So, really appreciate um, Chief Coastad's work in that, rest of the department, uh, Captain. Uh. Patton will be kind of taking, taking the lead in that as uh, that function moving forward, but um. They spread, they kind of spread that out and something they haven't necessarily done before. They spread it out throughout the department. So there's lots of, lots of hands within. Uh, that, that process. So um, that institutional knowledge and that base doesn't leave the department if there's any staffing changes as well. So, really appreciate that approach by uh, Chief Coastad.
Sorry, would you mind talking a little bit about their corporal assignments that are changing?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So. Uh, just last week, the um, the. Um, civil service testing. Lost there. Uh, went through a corporal testing uh, program. Uh, so. Two uh, corporals will be appointed as kind of leads within our department. So. The way, the way the department was staffed, we have sergeants on every shift that are the supervisors. And then officers in charge in case the, the um, sergeants aren't available, the officer in charge takes, takes a lead. Um, what we're finding is, is we have a fairly young department. They're bidding for um. Their shifts right now. And so, as you'd imagine, the graveyard shift. Um, tends to be the lowest ranking or the lowest tenured officers on patrol. Um, so we are having a difficulty in uh, staffing that with seasoned officers that were able to uh, take that leadership role. So one of the options were, as opposed to what we were doing in the past, uh, if a sergeant on the graveyard shift called in sick, we were calling another sergeant. Uh, on overtime. Um, it was costly, uh, and it's more costly than assigning those corporals. Taking away the officer in charge, uh, those corporals would take on those most difficult shifts. Um, they tend to be kind of mid. I guess mid-range in their career, not necessarily new, new officers, but not necessarily candidates for sergeant at this point. They take on some more responsibility. Uh, build their leadership skills and we develop some succession planning as well as we save some money, frankly. On these overnight shifts. So um, another approach that uh, Captain Coastad has, or geez, Chief Coastad has instituted. Uh, real, really, uh, really soon into his tenure here. And uh, we had six, uh, six candidates and interviewed for those positions. So it's great that we have, uh, we have staff in the police department that are uh, willing and able to take on, take on that leadership role. Uh, the next thing I have tonight, um. December fifth, before our council meeting, five o'clock, we're inviting uh, volunteers and doing the first volunteer recognition, I think. At least citywide that I can remember in my tenure here. Um, so we have started reaching out to um, folks that have. Served on committees, on councils uh, over the last year, um, have dedicated time to city operations, bring them in. Just recognize them for, for their, their efforts. Uh, we're putting together a kind of a monetary uh, tally of what that means to the. To the city and to our community at the same time, those that have donated funds as well. Uh, so really interested in um. Bring those folks to the table. I think we have Jordan left, but I think we have fourteen or fifteen RSVPs so far. Um, so I want to invite the council, um, five o'clock, uh, December fifth, out in the main room. Um. Free to thank them, make some comments, uh, shake their hands and uh. Again, recognize them for their, for their work in our community. See, I am working on um, kind of a new council member handbook or notebook. Um, so. Uh, that's kind of in process. I want to get to our council members elect uh, prior to the end of the year. Um, basically, you know, a little bit of one-on-one, council member one-on-one. Uh, so if some of you can remember back to the times you started here on the council and what might have been useful information that was provided to you prior to um. Prior to sitting in the seat, I'd be happy to receive that information and be able to include that in the notebook, but uh. That should be complete over the next week or so and reach out to new council members and uh, provide that information to them. Uh, we received the uh, ALTA survey, which is higher level survey for the post office park. Um, land exchange that has been sent off to. Uh, US Postal Service for their review prior to moving through the exchange agreement. So I want to make sure that we're meeting all of their requirements. Um, before moving forward. So as soon as I hear back that uh, that, that survey has, has met their requirements, we'll come back to. To council with that exchange agreement and kind of wrap up that project that's been hanging out there for some time. Um. We have canceled the study session for next week, the twenty eighth, so a Tuesday off. Um, possibly. And the last thing I want to mention, and we, we have a little bit of time, but um, it's quickly approaching the festival of the furs. And Christmas Town and all the events going around uh, in town. Um, really excited about um, the continuation of these events. Um, and all the players that are involved with this, there's too many to really list. Um, but uh, it's um. It's something that I've been intimately involved with, with uh, my Kiwanis Club, uh, and the, all the players that, that have. I think taken a piece of this and made this a really special time in our community. So I want to recognize that. Um, and certainly uh, bring that to the council's attention, use attention any chance we get because it really transforms this community. And, and there's something really neat and special. And John and Rachel sitting back here certainly have uh, have their hands all over this. Uh, literally, maybe a little, maybe a little blood. That's just that, right? And, and their whole family um, as well. Uh, so. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a really special time. Um, there's opportunities for others to volunteer within that. Um. I think that um, I've been on, I've been on the end of a couple discussions about what was the reverse parade? Or what was the, what was the parade? And why didn't you do this? And why didn't you do that? You should do it this way? And we welcome, we welcome those comments, particularly when you're volunteering, you're standing side by side when it's thirty six degrees and raining, right? Uh, so there's plenty of opportunities out there. I'd be happy to direct anybody to, to those opportunities. Um, if they want to reach out to me or. Um, some others within the community, especially in Christmas Town, Kiwanis. So, um, that's all I have for you tonight. Happy to uh. Address any other issues that you might have.
Thank you, Mark. And if you have any comments or questions for the city manager? Alright, then at this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donovan, anyone signed up for the comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Dean Jewitt.
Good evening. Uh, just wanted to talk about a plethora of topics. First one is the city app. Uh, city app was brought out and supposed to be designed easy to use, easy to report, get your feedback, you know, send out a. Send out, I mean, there's roads, homeless camps, garbage, there's all kinds of stuff that you can report on that app. Pretty easy to use. Uh, it's been disappointing in the state, to say the least, when you end up having to wait fourteen, fifteen, sixteen days. To see a resolution and/or get a response back on the app that says resolved, but there's nowhere in that app. That tells you what the resolution was. You know, was, I mean, but what happened? I mean, who was out there? How, how did it get resolved? I had to send an email. And I got a response uh, from our, our manager. And I definitely appreciate that, Mark. Thank you. Uh, but some of the answers that you get back on some of these things that you report. Uh, aren't the answers that I'd like to see. So when you report a individual in a location that has a camp that's just spread out everywhere. And you find out that on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, it's monitored. To distract people from camping there, but then that same person is there over and over and over and over, and the mess hasn't gone anywhere. It just makes you scratch your head and wonder, well, why am I even reporting on the app? You know, there's been times when it doesn't work. I guess my question is, and a statement. If we're going to use this and it's going to be a tool, because it should be a good tool and a tool should be easy to use. Use the tool as it's designed, follow through with it, be proactive. How many of you all sitting in here have had conversations with businesses and or citizens on how to use the app? And what the expectations are from the app and who's running the app and how do you get the response back? I mean, you should be able to go into that app and see the response without having to call into the city manager or send an email. And we have him waste his time sending that back. So maybe I'm running the app wrong, maybe I'm an idiot, I don't know, but I know how to run apps, I know IT. So, anyway. Uh. There's a, you know, when you, when you, when you, when you make a, when you, when you use the app. You're trying to basically take some calls away from the nine one one center, right? Because you shouldn't be calling nine one one for something that's as simple as some of these things that go on there. Uh, but when then you get a reply back on it, well, uh, this tent's not, no longer here, this isn't here anymore. That person moved along, we couldn't find anything. Well, how much time from when it was reported to when it was acted on? You know, I mean, of course that's going to happen. People are going to disappear. Uh, well, it looks like that's about all the time I have. The three minutes is not nearly enough for me. I tell you, tell you that right now. Mark quit smirking. Alright, thanks guys.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, we have um, someone on Zoom. We have Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Schmidt. And fellow council members, I'm Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quahute Communities. Just wanted to update you on what all of the agencies are doing as it relates to homeless services for emergency housing. City manager Ziegler will coordinate site visits to Longview and Everett. And he's going to provide dates and times for those in December. We're talking with city staff about a list of sites for a proposed mitigation site. Providers also in an effort to encourage more landlords to provide rental units, met with the Mason County Housing Authority. To request a study be done to reassess the fair market value for Mason County. They expressed interest, so we will be speaking with the University of Washington, who did a similar report for Kitsap County. In hopes that we can get the fair market values for Mason County increased and more landlords will be incented to want to rent to our, our uh, residents. All providers participated in a meeting with Jill Stanton, the Executive Director of Birmingham Housing Authority. She provided sample MOUs for any provider interested in gaining access to housing vouchers. She also provided steps needed to get tenant-based vouchers, which are critically important to all of us who are providing housing. City manager Ziegler has been talking with his staff about applying for mid-market housing support through Commerce. Grants, city of Everett reported about the success of reducing costs with pallet shelters. The Public Works reported a sixty-six percent less resources needed for road street cleanups. And the police reported an eleven percent reduction in report calls for service. The agencies will work together to write up documents needed for a mitigation site, including rules. Cost analysis, success data and funding sources. And we are all looking for funding opportunities coming in March of twenty twenty four. To see that we can work together to submit proposals for funding. Thank you.
You. Anyone else signed up, Donna?
That is all for now.
Anyone in the audience? Like to speak? Rachel, did you want to talk about some volunteer opportunities coming up for Christmas trees or anything?
Um, I understand if anything Christmas paid up on the weekend, so.
This, this weekend?
Yeah.
You have time, they're going to start?
Uh, probably in certain morning and probably around noon, we give you time to come, people get, get the layout started.
And then once that's started. The mass.
The hardest part is putting lights on. So if anybody even have a couple of hours to come and help put lights out, I'll ring the matchups.
Alright. Sounds good. Alright. Uh, does council have any new items for discussion tonight? Alright, then. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December fifth at six PM, and this meeting is adjourned at seven oh five PM.